Be a big part of the September meeting to establish chairman and the committee that will be presented. And so, it'll be presented in the September meeting.
So we're getting, we're getting.
I thought it was always in September.
I'd like to make a motion. I know that we re- re- activated the jail study committee. This should be made up by commissioners only as commissioners will be the ones filing it.
I'll pay you no way.
No, we're not going to. I'm second to that.
You've got to have somebody on this committee that's a law enforcement.
No, this is just the jail study committee.
That's what I'm saying. You've got to have somebody, you've got to have a chair. I need some judge over there.
Just a study, just a study. This is not the regular vet, that committee. What is that?
It's not the judge kind of thing.
For everybody else.
Okay, I rescind it. I give up. I give up, John Carroll. Just understand that him, when we get sued.
Look, all the thing I should do is put Darrell on there. That's all you've got to do.
We're not playing that.
But the joint county and maybe, oh, somebody remembers that. The joint, it's the one that the good folks from Bob asked Jim Hart. We've already passed a resolution that we was going to move forward with that committee. We done the resolution. It's officially. Yes, sir. We, we, my knowledge of the members that they were being officially identified, okay.
Hey, 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 come on now, let's stick with the business. Let's let everybody talk.
I rescind my motion.
On the joint county corrections committee that Bob asked and Jim Hart recommended, and that's the theme by which we move forward in the steps of what is going to occur concerning future decisions about the jail. If I remember correctly, the resolution that we were going to adopt that has already been made and passed. The committee members being officially identified and voted on has not occurred. I do remember though, that there was a consensus of us that there would be a commissioner for each district. And I, I remember Kim and I talked about that. Kim was going to be representing for the fifth district. I don't know how much down the road that has or has not occurred, but I believe that other positions are sort of locked in concrete. Darrell, Brent, the city police chief, DA, maybe assistant DA. I think judges, I think those were sort of already locked in position. To me, that is a crucial committee to make this thing go into the official steps that we need to be moving forward. So if we don't have the committee members identified, if I remember correctly, on the commissioners, one commissioner, plus those, maybe we ought to bring all that, get that done, turn it into Brent's, so that we can move. But on the district committee.
Yes.
Bring a few words, we got all the members of that group here?
I've, I know who's the mandatory people. I'll leave that information for you.
If you don't have the district, it's not, number two, the district you don't have.
All right, can we talk about the?
If y'all can put your hands on the big staple stat. Several pages too, not quite as many. And I want to quickly go, if you lay it sort of side by side, the answer question, stop me. If somebody thinks you could knock a note, just cut a note and back up and ask that's okay too, by the works. Your note that, that. I'm gonna start with the statement, then you'll say we really start with the expenditures. Prentice, in talking with Diane, and Diane, I guess it's person thanks enough for her. And Diane, if you want to come closer in that group or you couldn't fill up. You should, you know, okay. Well, because I, I, I worried that woman's death, and I know that she had some bad words to say. I deserve them all. But having said that, I, I should have used this assumption, and, and some we missed and so forth. You might catch it, you disagree with it, just know that's the assumption you need to ask and make questions or whatever, okay? I started with the assumption of the eighteen, nineteen budget numbers, okay? And then for the nineteen, twenty numbers, I said, okay, unless we are, no mandatory changes to the budget figures, such as department heads, state mandate. We know that nineteen, twenty numbers have got to go up, but cannot stay the same, okay? So those would be higher than the eighteen, nineteen old numbers. If we had areas identified that had already been agreed on by the budget committee that we was going to put the numbers in, that was higher than the eighteen, nineteen, and those numbers was also present. But unless I could tell you why they went up, or Diane could tell you why we increased it for nineteen, twenty, then you're looking at the eighteen, nineteen number that was there, okay? That was unlike Prentice of starting the budget process and going down through it. So, that being said, if you look at the footnote, the first thing that's on there, number two, gives county exactly fifty-one, three hundred. So go over to your expenditures, and on the highlighted area in your revenues, did anyone have questions on those numbers? Because they indicate that they were changed to something more over eighteen, nineteen years.
Most of them were increased.
Well, they, they were, or it was some small variations of a, and I'll just use the litigation, litigation tax on equipment. Last year was eighty-one, twenty-four, and it, it's an eight, and I believe it came from last year's budget of, of being eight. It was a pad break. That's just example on page nine of revenue. I just used that as an example, okay? But most of, I think, but if you got questions on any of the highlighted jailers by, on, on revenues, please, please. Sure, okay.
I'm gonna go under county mayor.
Page, page number.
Yeah. Okay, so Diane and Paula, they're both under.
I'm sorry, that's, that's, that's expenses, not on revenue. Okay, okay, on revenue, I'll, I'll make this comment on page twelve. On page twelve up there, you'll see an insurance recovery, and Diane had an amount in there of average sort of what we've experienced, and I don't know if we went back beyond seventeen, eighteen, or whatever. I told you just to completely take it out. You have no idea if you're going to have some sort of a loss that would require the, the insurance of the rights or check that is not used or replaced. So it's just money falls out of the air, if, if money falls in that account. Hopefully you don't have insurance to pay for that, because that means no access, no rent, follow-up buildings, you know, those kind of things. So, take it out, because it'll be, it's, it's definitely the paper. Now, I should have handed out this, or Diane, you should have straightened it out. You be so kind, everybody take one of those. And what it is, is a correction to what you got in your hands. Going back through it, bruising again and again and again, it's just a heavy page, you said correction, it's made up. Okay, so no questions on revenue, that's on page thirteen, which is where Janine's at. And your note is new page thirteen, that's one of your new pages that you just got handed to you. Okay? You got a new page thirteen that you can take and slide over here. And Janine, you go ahead and ask your question for me.
Okay, so Diane and Paula are under the county mayor instead of the finance department, and just because we haven't established that yet, I guess at this time, is that right? And then that you'll just transition them over later, that won't be a problem?
Well, that, if, if budget committee members remember, we actually had that over under the financial director initially, and since that's not in place, and it sort of is a unknown timeframe as of this moment. In other words, it's not happening tomorrow, sort of the holding pattern. Those expenses are, aren't being incurred, and will be incurred under the county mayor, so we brought it back, it went under the county mayor. But the answer is yes, once the financial director is in place, whatever was incurred under the county mayor at that point in time, it stayed in the county mayor's budget, and then the fact balance would be brought over from bounced the fiscal year into the financial director's budget, okay? So they, they remain, give or take, the same, because in essence, if we know under the financial director existing salaries that support the financial activities that you can afford, it has to go under the financial director, okay?
And then, again, the increase as far as that, the fourteen thousand and my ninety-one sixty-one?
Diane, help me on that if you'd be so kind. We're under the one sixty-one secretary, we incurred eleven thousand, eight hundred, nineteen dollars, and we increased it to fourteen.
Well, we just had fourteen in the finance office, I just moved it to that.
And, and that's what I thought I remembered was from a standpoint of recognizing you really don't know what those figures are going to end up being under the financial director.
Well, that's also for a part-time employee, correct?
It is.
And see, that falls in line with what Angela has asked for as well, that fourteen thousand. And I say, you, you know, we talk about this all the time, we've got different people all over, it makes different matters. But that fourteen thousand falls in line with what she needs as well.
But that's, and, and again, there's nothing magical about that number, it's not in concrete. So, you know, whatever the reality is, is what it's going to be, but I think it's reasonable as a part-time, if that turns out to hold there. You'll see under audit services there that it was fifty-five thousand, two forty-four under the eighteen, nineteen budget, and you got a complete blank there, it's moved over to the financial director. You'll see the fifty-two hundred dollars over under the financial director's budget. So it's not decreasing, the total budget has been moved over.
And that's, that's the state?
Yes.
That pays it?
What we actually changed was a line out of two oh five, employee insurance, we had a figure in there of twenty-six hundred dollars, and that, it, it just isn't a lot.
And I put it in half, I was trying to figure out what, and I put that in half because I'm assuming somebody might not be hiring until.
I understand, sure.
But then that, but mine has got that same amount of insurance.
I understand, and that's a good point. Anyway, you'll see on your correct sheet or the sheet you've just been hanging out loose, it is five thousand, one hundred and fifty-one. And how the figure's calculated is, we're two months premium on help, July, oh, it's at the old rates, okay? So we're paying higher for two months because we're still on the old health plan. And then the four hundred dollars is being proposed, if we go under the state plan for each participating participant, then ten comes forward, four thousand, plus those two higher months is how calculated to be five thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars. In future years, if that holds, then it'd be forty-eight hundred dollars. But always keep in mind, we all know health insurance goes up, so odds are premiums going up next year as well anyway. But that's how the calculation was occurred. You'll see the fifty-one, fifty-one occur in various departments' budget over and over again under employee insurance. Basically, it's one employee, ten month, two, two months over plan, premiums, ten months at four hundred dollars a month. Okay, any questions on county mayor?
Legal services, how'd you come up with ten thousand and tell me, thank you, really?
Yes, sir. He, uh, Chris made the comment either the last meeting or the one before, a figure of eight hundred and fifty dollars, and he might be able to give more inside that number, but I took the eight hundred and fifty bucks, times twelve, and I possibly ran it, because I think it's a little over.
It's ten, it is.
Okay, yeah, I just ran it to ten. But that's how I came up with that figure.
That's just the money that, the rest of my salary that just donated, I take eight hundred and fifty dollars and give it to another chair.
I, I mean, you made that statement, I just didn't want to put words in the mouth, but that's how the calculation came.
You could pay eight hundred, we paid you eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Good question, though. Any other questions on the county mayor, for y'all, for your understanding? Okay. Next is the fifty-one, fifty, if you would, I mean, fifty-one, five hundred, but look, look at, yeah, that's page thirteen? Is it right?
Fourteen.
I'm sorry, page fourteen, yes, page fourteen. And you got to use page fourteen as well, guys, okay? You gotta lose page fourteen that you just, just received. What changed was two oh five, no, it wasn't. It's register of deeds, register of deeds is what changed. But if you would, before I get there, look under election commission, under a line out of one ninety-three, election workers. I think Jim had proposed dropping that down to ten, Jim, if I remember correctly, but based on what Matt had discussed with me, and he just said we sent a lot of big guys from Hager, and, and Corin already mentioned, we get reimbursed, but it's just, you gotta pay upfront, so that's why you need to cover it, so you got it.
Can I make a motion unless anybody's got any problems with that, that we approve that budget?
Well, I, I don't think the insurance comment that you made has any bearing on.
It don't have any bearing on the budget.
I don't think so either, in the sense of them not agreeing or accepting, is what I'm trying to say. You know, he said, if y'all disagree with it, you gotta come and talk, because we got to talk. I think pressure, that's on the fourteen, five, or.
Is insurance in the budget for a woodman?
What's on?
Is insurance in, in the line item in the budget for a woodman?
Insurance, what is insurance? Okay, this is employee, that's our point. He got employee.
That's correct, but if he. Yeah, that's what I should say, if he takes out the county insurance, well, I, I answer.
Well, again, I, I hear what you're saying, and whatever the folks want to do, that, that's absolutely fine, yeah, absolutely fine. I just think that he thinks, and I think he's expressing himself as part of the other night, he's saying, you almost kind of knows his body of face because you're actually costing yourself more than he would if you just stayed in court. The only problem with that statement, and he, he understands, oh, we, we had a good conversation. He's trying to be equitable possible with all the employees in the county. And he understands that. Now, having said that, maybe he thinks the county insurance, maybe he doesn't, but based on his conversation with me, and if I understood what he's trying to say again or not, I think he has insurance somewhere else, who, who somewhere he's not with the county now, and I don't think he anticipates going to the county. So anyway, with that being said, for me, I want to do all that, fine.
Well, the only option is to do what we've been doing, unless we say that, you know, we're rolling the dice and hoping that he doesn't take insurance.
Well, again, it's, it's, it's the if versus what, I mean, you know, he didn't include himself in insurance. And he didn't back up and put, when I was having my conversation with him, he says, well, so we don't have to go for your insurance.
Well, I don't have a problem with, with the way this supposed to be, is I would speak for everybody, but I think, when I looked at mine and yours, they might as well.
Well, again, what I don't want to do, consensus is.
I mean, that, that's something that unless anybody's got any problems with, we could actually say that one's done.
I think before I say that one's done, I will know if he's going to take the insurance or not, because that's going to make a difference.
Well, he can come back for a budget. I mean, if he takes the insurance.
A budget amendment, you gotta move from one line to another to make the amendment, he may not have anything to move.
Well, no, I mean, like, for example, if we have somebody quit in an office, then that's not taking the insurance, and they replace him with somebody that is, they have to come in and ask us for a budget, and we put that one in, we just have to pull it out of their fund.
Well, I mean, if, if that, if that, if that would be the thing there, pay just in case. If you don't take it, then there you are.
What are you gonna do then? That's only a problem.
You may anticipate if you don't take it.
But now, if we did that, is that in his budget that he can move? He's gonna come back?
That goes as late as.
Yeah. Well, we can get insurance.
Okay.
Okay, what changed on the separate sheet, new sheet you got is under register of deeds, and it has to do with the secretary's pay. Your note there is showing is twenty-four thousand, and I had Diane back it down to the twenty thousand, eight twenty-one. You'll remember Sandy's comments when she presented her budget to the committee was, guys, you cut me four thousand bucks from a prior budget, and I'm just asking to give me back what I had. That was her exact comments to us. So Diane went ahead and put it in, and I said, no, based on my premise of what I'm putting numbers together, I didn't feel comfortable, again, based upon my logic in the other departments. And we all know that for most part, that was requested salary increases just about to enter the department. A few wasn't, but for the most, there was, if possible. So from my standpoint, I just didn't feel comfortable with saying, okay, put it in, so I did put it in. That's why I changed the twinkle back to the twenty, eight twenty-one.
I, I, I see what you're saying, but at the same time, we're gonna, it's been proposed that we do that to Katrina, and you said, as soon as that email, she makes a very valid point, how are we going to do that to the certificated clerk's office and then not do it to her office?
Guys, it, it's just no longer taken, please, please, Chinese, you know. What, what, what's the significance of the commissioners? I, I, I got it for.
Can we just discuss it, and then we'll see what happens again?
It's just, it's just where my logic comes.
I mean, that's just what I was, we're arguing.
Okay, so everybody understands that? Coming down to, oh, 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 on the planning BCA, again, I know what Mr. Farley said, I just want to make sure that you understand, and if you don't ask questions, sure, if somebody's on the table can confirm or explain the word, which I can. Basically, the office that Mr. Farley runs charges dues to the counties that they support in order to help the financing of that operation, okay? And that is dues, literally, it's separate and apart from everything else they touch on us. Like he said, for those dues being paid, we provide these services at no additional cost. Meals on Wheels, the U card, the, right, the grants, the, whatever else that he threw out. All of that is quote-unquote covered under the dues that we didn't pay last year, and is not in the budget this year to be paid. And like I mentioned to him, they actually, the letter or, or call that they sent was asking for two years to be paid, which was a pretty nice sum of money, over ten thousand dollars.
Is that what this ten seven five?
No.
That what it left?
Okay. That, that, Tommy Lee's, and I don't know how that works, guys, I'll be honest with you, because he's an employee of that group. But somehow this is an additional cost that Tommy Lee's charging for his services.
So would we have to add another five thousand to this to pay for what Mr. Farley asked for?
Well, it would be here, be back on the contribution.
Unsheathing.
Diane, Diane. Tommy doesn't charge that to the development district, that goes to the development district, and that is covered by Tommy.
Yeah, basically, they're collecting for all fourteen counties, making a salary and to do all these.
And again, and again, I'm playing with you, he's, he has a lot of knowledge, and he helps you.
Diane, I heard you, but I don't understand, say it again.
We pay the development district, but it goes for Tommy, and we do the planner for the county.
Okay, what's the distinction between the development district and what Mr. Farley stood here and represented?
It was the same thing.
Okay, so, but I think it's correct.
There's the two, here's the.
Well, what they're doing is they're, they're collecting five thousand dollars just to be the loan.
It takes five thousand dollars to do the Meals on Wheels, and the transportation of the people to the. Has nothing to do with the planner, I mean, although the planner comes along with the development district.
But anyway, if y'all understand that, that's great, okay? But I just want to make the distinction between us not paying dues has nothing to do with this itself. Except, guys, you heard what Mr. Farley said, and he's made it very plain. We'll give it to you one more year, nineteen, twenty year, we're letting it ride. And Tommy, keep coming down and helping you out, as long as you're paying the ten seven. But if you ain't got any budget next year, you ain't got no time. You ain't got nothing, okay? They're gonna cut us off entire. And that's where we stand from their standpoint. One more year for free, but if next year's budget don't include the dues, then we ain't got no affiliations with them, nobody. So the, the ten seven fifty won't be in the budget, that's what Tommy will leave you. So that's where we stand as fishery from Mr. Farley, who is, um, is boss. Okay, any questions on planning BCA?
Yeah, how come there's that two thousand dollars right there for the legal services?
That's where their notes that they require, they have.
I, I know that for like legal notices, but the two thousand for the legal services, this is meant we did it. Again, two thousand last year, like for startup costs and stuff, but I thought they were going to be able to self-support.
Well, they will, if we get a covenant. Do you get a covenant? If we got the covenants more from office, we'll actually bring it around.
But that's actually covered, it's all right, legal services.
Three, three, one, all right.
Is that like that?
Yes, that is.
Actually, think, well, didn't they get twenty-five hundred dollars? And they put that, well, that was from the permits, and they put it in that fund, but I don't think they used it, that, you know, it was on. That's what it was.
They got some, they got some permitted money for the cell phone.
That's correct, that's correct. They used four hundred and fourteen dollars, that would have been twenty-five. It's the same money they had last year, they're just carrying it over. It's not you, man. Does that make sense?
Well, because we did a budget amendment, we had to do a budget amendment.
Do they have another?
Now, that was a different issue of budget.
Do they have another lawsuit?
Did what, Janine, I'm sorry?
Do you have another lawsuit for me?
No, not, we were.
Okay, go down to the page as you're going, but fifty-one, six hundred.
Fifty-six.
I'm sorry, we, we, we've been there, done that, let's move on, got BZA, okay, fifty-one, eight hundred is my next, which is county buildings. Just scan that quickly, your note, did I say no change? Does anybody have anything there? On page fifteen?
We've actually decreased some of mine. We're on the big staple.
The big staple, the big staple, page fifteen, I don't think there's a separate sheet.
No, it's page fifteen.
Okay, yeah.
One sixty-seven, you actually decreased what I had, and then you decreased one sixty-nine as well, which I ain't gonna argue with that. I mean, you wanted to do that. The only thing I had was three twenty-eight, is janitorial services, and Diane, we all, like this, and that's a twelve dollar an hour job, is that correct? Ten dollar an hour, that don't equal fifteen thousand dollars a year, because she only worked for me every week.
That was what was in the budget last year, so I mean, Ralph's told me to put everything back in last year.
So you see what I'm saying?
Yeah. So Diane, what would be the problem?
Ten dollars an hour?
Well, it's first twenty hours, please, so.
So that's two hundred dollars a week times fifty-two.
Yeah, Diane, just make a note there.
I had it at eleven thousand dollars, rounded off.
Was that the?
That was it, that's a ten, I, I actually wrote down twelve, but I think it is ten.
Diane, hold your finger again.
It'd be about eleven thousand dollars a year, it'd be two hundred dollars a week, right? Times fifty-two, so ten thousand, four hundred. So I had it at eleven thousand, so that's about a four thousand dollar savings.
Diane, eleven? Eleven. Okay, good deal, anything else going on to do there, if you want?
I have that question about the copiers and stuff. Now, these are rented, is that right?
At least.
At least. Wouldn't that be better to purchase them?
Well, we have looked at that, and they're pretty expensive, so we've stayed with this. Harper, I mean, they can, they can place it, so, but I think that would be an option.
Only problem is that you, you had to fix.
And it tears them apart.
Thank you.
Uh, see, y'all, y'all have any, I, I, I've not observed or, or been, been aware of, are the printers that are so unique or different that it doesn't follow the category, when they tear up, you don't even attempt to fix your code after you know it?
Well, you lease it, they take care of it.
I understand that, but I mean, the problem was, printers, they got, they're cheap. Is it? Okay, hopefully, printers.
The one that Sandy has is like the big printers, they're, they're not like the, or the.